Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the 6th floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 9th, 2016, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go on to close the meeting by order of the Mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds? Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Dr. Patton?
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, I'd like to begin our public work session with an introduction of our new Assistant Police Chiefs who have joined us this evening. We have Mrs. Kimberly Wilson, who began her journey with the Portsmouth Police Department in January of 1995. Assistant Chief Wilson will utilize her extensive experiences in law enforcement from a career that spans over 20 years. Assistant Chief Wilson has oversight of the administrative branch. We have also with us tonight Assistant Chief Graylin Williams, who has over 30 years of experience in public safety, global security, and internal investigations. He comes to us from the Pennsylvania Office of the Inspector General as the Inspector General. Assistant Chief Williams will have oversight for the investigative branch. And we have Assistant Chief Angela Green, who has 15 years of experience in public safety and law enforcement. She comes to us from the City of Richmond's Police Department as a police captain, where she began as a recruit in the training academy and progressed her way to the field services, sergeant, lieutenant, and then captain. Assistant Chief Green has oversight of the operations branch. Mayor, members of council, I gave you their full resumes a couple of weeks ago, almost a month ago. But let us welcome, if we could, our new Assistant Chiefs of the Portsmouth Police Department.
Several of us had the great fortune to be at the ceremony and to see your pinned and see your families, and we want to thank you for coming to this city and for you being here in the city and for what you will do for all of us. My comments were sincere about keeping God first and serving our citizens to the utmost. That is, that is quite a... Vice Mayor was there. Dr. Edmonds was there.
Yes, he was there.
And Bill, you were there?
Yes.
And so, what with that, is there a spokesperson in the group?
We're all thrilled to be here. We are happy, and we're here 110% to make sure that we give the best service to the City of Portsmouth residents, visitors, business owners, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. They're not going to stay with us. They're going to go back to their respective jobs. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Patton.
You're welcome. During this evening's public work session, we have two presentations. Our first presentation heralds the initial planning for the development of the city's new comprehensive plan that will replace the current 10-year comprehensive plan entitled "Destination 2025: Setting a Bold New Course." The preparation for a new comprehensive plan is the responsibility of the Planning Commission, with the Department of Planning serving as the staff to the commission. In Virginia, communities are required to develop and adopt a comprehensive plan according to the state code, Section 15 dot 2 dash 2223. Mr. Bob Baldwin, Director of Planning, and Mr. Brian Swetts, Planning Administrator, are the presenters this evening. They will highlight the planned development, the new state requirements, scheduling, and introduce the consultant team selected to assist with the process and development. Our second presentation focuses on a topic of living wage that, over the past few months, has become a growing dialogue across the nation, in the region, and with our City Council. With the current financial climate, more and more employers are exploring the impact living wage has on their employees. Mrs. Elizabeth Gutten, our Human Resources, Human Services Director, will present a brief history on living wages, the authority of local governments under state code to implement a living wage, and an overview of the living wage calculator for the City of Portsmouth as cited by the Virginia, by the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, which is the leading body on compiling living wage for our localities. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of council, Vice Mayor. Move this keyboard up just a little bit. Well, it is that time again to update our comprehensive plan. I just, I'm aware that Councilman Cherry was with the Planning Commission. We did this the last time. He was Vice Chair when I went through the process the last time. Councilman Moody was on City Council that time, so we have two veterans in this process. So I'd just like to make a note of that as we get started. As Dr. Patton was noting there, our current comprehensive plan, Destination 2025, has been in use since 2005. So we've got 11 years under the belt with that. And we've really reached the time where we need to update and, in fact, replace that plan. So for this evening, we're going to give you kind of a quick summary of what the state requirements are, as Dr. Patton had noted. We're going to talk about the process we're going to follow. And just note, as I'm sure you're aware and those who are involved before, this is a significant effort for the Planning Department and the whole city to do this kind of an effort. We expect we're going to be at this for about two years before the process gets to the very end, so. Again, under Virginia law, the state code, as you know, or Dillon Rule State, it tells us where we have to go to do our comprehensive planning. Section 15.2223 describes the comprehensive plan, scope, things you need to do. Many of the items in the state code are mandatory. We must have them in our plan. For example, there must be a transportation element in the plan. There are also many things they put in the, in the state code that are optional. They sort of suggest things you can do. And in addition to that, you can go beyond that. You're not restricted in things you might want to cover just because they don't have them in the, in the state code. But we do follow the state code requirements as far as preparing a conference plan.
You had to use that photo there.
Which one?
That?
This one? Yeah, we thought you'd like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. You feel, you feel the love for that one today. Okay. We've had a lot of plans under, under the, this timeframe, this 11 year. So, yes. So, so again, you know, we go back and look at the state code requirements. There's a number of what we consider standard elements in a comprehensive plan. You're familiar with them. We have the future land use map. We also have narrative, and that's what you're familiar with when the Planning Department makes recommendations to the Planning Commission and City Council on rezonings and use permits. The state code requires a master transportation plan. That has been in place for a long time, but that is a mandatory requirement. You must have an element in there. There's some differences in it this time compared to the last time, which we'll get into a little bit later in the presentation. And as you know, we typically start off these processes, we do a vision, goals, and strategies session. Where are we trying to go? Again, this is a future thinking, a document we're trying to plan for the future. So there's always this vision, this vision piece. So again, while the state has that, you know, kind of a lengthy list in there, the conference plan really becomes our roadmap to the future. We may or may not stick to the normal or kind of typical 20-year timeframe in our planning horizon because of some of the issues we'll be addressing in the plan that might take a longer time view, but the typical is about a 20-year timeframe. Again, when we mentioned the typical things in our comprehensive plan, but as we move forward with this one, we're going to have some, we're going to have some changes. And, and in this case, you know, we're going to talk about these issues related to outreach. We're going to talk about sources of data that we use when we do a comprehensive plan, a number of those elements that we'll get into. And I just mentioned briefly, I think you're already aware, we mentioned this before, we did demographic analysis with the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service at University of Virginia. That document's been completed and actually on the city's webpage. We've also did, you may recall, we did the effort with the, with VMASS, Virginia Modeling Analysis Simulation. We did the 2,000 household sea level rise recurrent flooding survey. That's also part of the process, kind of building our background data. In addition to that, we will have a lot of other data, information pieces we will pick up along the way, which we will, we can do that. So that, that kind of gets you started there. What I'd like to do now is turn, is turn the stage here, over to Brian Swetts. He's our Planning Administrator. He's going to be Project Manager for going through this process. Brian's going to talk about some of the new elements. I mentioned some of the sort of traditional old ones that we have to have in there. Brian's going to talk a little bit more about some of the new things we have to cover in here, and then he'll also introduce our consulting team to you. So with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Brian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. I want to start by talking about some of the features that we're looking at to help organize the update process. The first is our belief in an extensive public outreach effort. I'm going to talk a little bit more about this in the next slide, but I want to emphasize that to us, this is the most important part of the update process. This is our opportunity to actively engage with the community so we can build trust in what we're doing and so that when this plan ultimately comes to you, you all know that it's a result of the community's input and not just planning departments and the consultants' input. Excuse me. We're going to have a couple of new features in the comprehensive plan. The first is that it's going to be organized around these integrated elements and not about isolated chapters. We want to be able to look at the way that the city departments can work together and not just look at each department as an individual silo. These elements or themes are going to come out of our conversations with the communities. I can't tell you exactly what they're going to be right now. What I can tell you is that one of the most important themes that we're looking at is this concept of resiliency. And resiliency is illustrated on this diagram here on the right. To us, resiliency is about creating a strong community that's capable of weathering challenging times and changing conditions. Resiliency can mean a number of things. It can be looking at how do we recover from a short-term catastrophe, or it could be looking at things like the long-term evolution of the demands of our housing market. When we look at resiliency, we are looking at a couple of different subgroups here. We're looking at things like social resiliency. How do we create a community that's open, inclusive to all people? Economic resiliency. How would the city bounce back if we lost a major employer? Environmental resiliency. Sea level rise and recurrent flooding are major problems for the city, so we want to look at how we can make sure that the city is strong and that we can, if we have problems with sea level rise and recurrent flooding, how do we recover? How do we make the city better so that those problems don't affect us again in the future? Another new feature in the plan is going to be sea level rise. This is a new requirement under Virginia law that comprehensive plans have to take into effect sea level rise. We will be bringing this to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission for their approval, and I'll talk about that more in the next slide as well, but this is something that we now do have to address directly. And finally, we are going to be evaluating our efforts using the American Planning Association's Sustaining Places Scorecard. The scorecard is kind of like a roadmap to make sure that we are engaging the process using best practices identified by planners across the country who've worked for years collectively to try to come up with a standard for how is the best way to go about engaging the community and crafting a plan that the community wants, not just what planners want. So I mentioned that public outreach will be one of the most important, the most important feature of our comprehensive plan. One of the things that we're going to be doing to help improve our public outreach process is we're going to have a public outreach team. This team is going to be made up of volunteers. It's going to be community members. Their job is going to be to use their extensive personal, professional, and social networks to help spread the word for the various opportunities that citizens will have for engagement. We will, we will be bringing them in. We'll train them on what a comprehensive plan is, what the process will look like, both in general and specific to the city, and then we'll use them to help spread the word. We'll still have your traditional public outreach processes, like, you know, media advertisements and things like that, but we want to try to start doing new things so that we can get more people involved in the process. Again, that is the most important thing. We want to make sure that we have all people in the city represented here, including people who may not have the time or the ability to make it to your traditional public meetings but who nevertheless want to be involved and want to have their voices heard. During this process, we've divided the two years into five phases, and at each phase, the consultants will be here to talk with you all. They will be previewing what is to come in the next phase and reviewing for you what's been done in the past. This is the opportunity for you all to provide feedback. It's also the opportunity for us to let you know what we're doing. Again, we don't want there to be any surprises. We're not trying to hide anything. We want there to be as much open communication dialogue as possible. We have a mandatory VDOT review. This is a 90-day process that VDOT has to make sure that our plan is in compliance with the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organizations' Long-Term Plan and VDOT's Six-Year Plan. We are already working with VDOT to make sure that this process will not take the full 90 days, that we will make this as condensed as possible. We don't want this to be a speed bump. We don't want to lose momentum. We want to keep working. So this is, you know, our example of how far we're already looking into the future to make sure that we're keeping on the timeline that we've, we've already projected. And finally, like I said, we have to bring this plan to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission to get feedback from other communities as to how we are addressing sea level rise. This is a new compliance component that's in Virginia state code. We don't know exactly what that means. The code is very vague, but we know that we are the first community that's going to do this, and we're actually very excited about that because it shows that we are going to be a leader. We're going to be setting the, setting the bar, setting the standard for what other Hampton Roads localities are going to have to do as it comes to sea level rise in their comprehensive plans. This is our planning team. As you can see, it's fairly lengthy. I'm not going to run through each person. We'll be happy to answer questions about who these people are and what their groups will do, if you're interested. But I want, who I do want to highlight are the four members, four main members of the team who are here present today, who will be working on the project. First is Emily Crowe. She is the Project Manager. She's with MDC. We have Greg Dale, who, also from MDC, who is the Partner in Charge. We have Jamie Green from Planning Next. He is going to be heading our community outreach effort. And we have Dulcino Miles with the Miles Agency. She will be helping with community outreach and heading up our public relations. We are excited to have them here. Thank you all for making the trip, and with that, we will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Real quick, the timeframe we're looking at now, Bob, you mentioned...
Yeah, we're looking at a two-year process, maybe a little bit less. We built into the two years, it has the 90 days built into the backend for VDOT. That's required by the state code to give them up to 90 days. They're supposed to try to shorten that, but we built that into the project schedule just in case it takes the full 90. The timeframe with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, we don't think too much. They don't really have to do, they're just, again, that's more information sharing, looking for best practices. And again, with us being the first group going through there, looking for us to sort of give a lead on how to address sea level rise in a comprehensive planning process.
What about our community outreach piece?
That will go on all the way through the process, and that's, I think, one of the things we're trying to get across here. We worked, put together this outreach team. We're certainly looking for any suggestions from council members, anyone, we're looking for people who are interested in the future. The city would like to get actively involved. A lot of people have a lot of networking that they do throughout their own, you know, social networks, their professional networks, neighborhood networks. Anyone who's got a vested interest or interest in getting involved in the planning process, we're looking to try to, to engage them. Hopefully, through that group, they'll help us continue to reach out, looking for people. Again, we're trying to make sure we get people who don't, we know we have a lot of people who are aware that traditionally get involved in things we do that show up for all the meetings, but that's a small percentage, a very small percentage of the, of the city as a whole. So we're going to make a concentrated effort from the beginning all the way through then to keep trying to go out and engage, trying to do things that are not sort of non-traditional means of getting public input. And so that'll go on, again, from the very first month of the process all the way to the very end.
And we plan to have those sessions out in the community.
Absolutely. One that we will get, we are not going to be in City Hall. You won't see us in City Hall very often. We are looking to get out. We've already, in fact, had some outreach with the Toward Community College with, with Dr. Woodhouse out there. She's offered up space out there. We're looking for other places out in the community, but I just mentioned one where she's interested in the process and has already offered up meeting space.
Very good. Just make sure we, now, some of that feedback, I think you had, I joked about that first photo you had up there when I think Ray and that team went out there.
Right.
A lot of disappointment in citizens that we went out and held these charrettes in different sectors and what we wound up seeing wasn't what anybody said they asked for.
Right.
And so one of the things we get the advantage of doing is saying, oh, somebody else said this and somebody else said that. And when you see the final product, like that photo with all those skyscrapers down there, and we all knew there wasn't a snowball's chance in hell that would happen, but we used it as...
Well, let me mention two things, and I, and I thoroughly make sure...
We don't have to do that because when we get citizens involved, they, some of them are truly vested and some of them truly have input, and we, our final product doesn't represent what their input is, and they, they want to separate themselves from what it is. They think we've done a snowball job.
Right. Let me just say this. I mentioned, you know, Davey Smith, the Chairman of the Planning Commission, is here with us, and he actually took the time to go on the city tour with the consultants. We took them out, kind of drove them around today, and he took the time to do that. We will be working through the Planning Commission as, you know, as, as part of their regular monthly duties, plus any extra meetings they need to have. That's why we have the check-in times for council. If there's anything that looks to council, like we're getting off course, something you think doesn't look realistic, you think the plan's getting, you know, we want to make sure we do these check-ins. And so we get to the end. I mean, the comprehensive plan, it's a long-range plan, but it's got to have, we always say it's got to be reality-based. You have to make sure it's, we're not showing, you know, pretty pictures and then, and then nobody can deliver on them. So that is, in fact, where the process.
It's pretty, and kind of ties in with what you were saying. I hope that, you know, the sort of, you know, us old guys don't need to be doing this. To me, it's the 20 to 40-year-olds who are not going to come to a meeting, they, they've got young families, and they just can't.
Right.
But they'll interact through, you know, smart IT people.
Right.
And I hope, and I'm assuming Dulcino being part of that and our wonderful new IT department, you'll, there'll be a way for them to do that.
We spent a fair amount of our meeting this morning talking about exactly that, that the plan, you know, when you're planning for the future, you have to be planning for people who are going to be, you know, most affected by it.
Yeah.
And that's going to go down, we will work down to school-age kids. We're not necessarily, you know, we talked about, you know, younger adults. We're going to try to get down as far as people are interested. We'll be working through the schools and that, I think, through community college. Again, we're going to be trying to reach these non, we know people who are, let's face it, they're, they're connected differently. They don't have the time. That's what we mentioned there, the, they're not going to give you two hours on a charrette meeting. We can look at, we can look at the photos of all of our charrettes we've ever had, and you can tell who's missing. And this isn't, you know...
Right. A lot of gray hair.
Yeah. You see, and nothing wrong with that, but we have a broad community out there. I always point out to people, if you look at the demographic analysis, you'll see, contrary to popular belief, the city's average age is below the state average. I don't think people pay attention to that fact, that we have a fairly young community out there that we're just not, you know, fully engaging. So we're going to do as much as we can, and we're open to any ideas anybody has. We've talked about having pop-up, you know, kind of opportunity for people on going to the neighborhoods and not, you know, not sitting there, we're going to meet at 7 o'clock at the Social Services Building, those kinds of things. That's sort of the way you used to do it. We're going to have a whole different, that's why we made sure our team, our planning, we are loaded with people who work in community outreach as their primary. We didn't do that the last time. It hasn't been sort of a normal thing to do, but we are focused on outreach, and that is our number one, you know, thing going. Because if you don't have public input, you get no ownership. The plan ends up being what we were always warned about, the one you put on the shelf because nobody buys it. So we are, we're very aware of that.
The question's covered most of what I want to say. I'm glad you recognized Chairman there for being here and have, you know, good job there. And y'all covered it, but you mentioned volunteers. As, as, as happened with most things here, you're going to have, you're going to have a couple, one section of town or neighborhood who, you'll have a lot of volunteers. Some sections, you won't have any. So we can't rely on volunteers. It may come to a point where we have to go out in the community to the churches, to civic leagues, to recruit and get people to come from all segments of, of town and all walks of life. Because if you remember, we went, like you said, we did this before, and everybody came from one section of town.
Right.
To be on, to be on the plan. And, and nobody can tell you what, knows best what could be in your backyard than you. So you need people from those, from those areas who can, who know what, who've been there, who are going to be there, to say what they want to be there in the future.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure we do it inclusively.
Absolutely on point, and that's example, we spent a long time this morning talking about outreach to the civic leagues. You know, again, we're looking for interested parties, and again, we also recognize one thing that I think is pretty clear. It's a long process. Hard to hold someone's attention for two years. We expect people to kind of come in and go in as, as you work through this. There'll be a core of people that want to stay with you the whole time, but you're going to have another, we're going to be open to that. This is not going to be a closed process. Sorry you didn't, you didn't talk to us in 2016. It's now 2018, we can't talk to you anymore. We will not have a process like that. This will be open all the way through.
You know, any plan should have a way to quantify the success of it. We're getting ready to move to another comp plan. How, and I know it's used in the planning presentations as a reference about like our vision principles are to the council meeting agenda, so how are we going to quantify that? And how was the last plan, the mayor made reference to the skyscrapers?
Right.
I haven't seen any of those downtown.
Well, the comprehensive plan did not have those in the comprehensive plan. That was smaller plans. Again, if you actually look at our comprehensive plan, the 2005 plan, I think you'd be quite surprised at how many things were in that plan that you actually...
Look at Frederick Boulevard?
Frederick Boulevard.
Boulevard.
TCC.
That was in the plan. I know because I was there.
Yeah. There's, we kind of go...
We know some of those things, but the public doesn't.
Right.
Well, one of, one of the deliverables that the team is going to be giving us in the next couple of months is a review of the current comprehensive plan and to let us know what we've achieved and what we still need to work on. So we're actually going to generate a report that's going to directly address your question.
And I think you're right. We look at this plan, and again, we want to make sure at once, and I think it's pretty clear, once you get the plan adopted, you need to then be measuring how it's doing. We talked about the state requirement to go back and do that five-year assessment. We don't want to wait five years. We consider this a living document. If we start to get off track, if the plan's not working, you know, we want to make instant corrections, but we are going to have systems in place because, I'll go back to the 2005 process, and again, Councilman Cherry was, was right on about this thing. The biggest concerns we had to us was that you're just doing a plan and nothing's going to happen from the plan, and we're quite pleased when we look at it. I think that's not exactly the way it turned out. The community actually, the council actually, quite frankly, adopted and implemented, whether you knew sometimes you were or weren't. A lot of things you were implementing were coming straight out of the comprehensive plan recommendations. So I feel very good about, about that. I think we can do a better process, and I think we can get, you know, we're trying to learn, and we have to build in this deal about sea level rise and resiliency, but I think we've got a good track record. I think the community will buy into this if we do what we described, which is participation, get people involved. I think what no one wants is us, for us to be lecturing them on what's best for the community. We need the community to be telling us what they want.
Okay. Yep. Let's keep buying and, and ownership. People want to feel that they're part of it, and as long as you keep them engaged in whatever method of going back and say, this is what I heard you say, and have a little back and forth.
Yeah. The community owns this plan. This is not, you know, the planning department's plan or is it community's plan.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Good evening.
That's all you wish to... Ms. Miles, it's been a while.
I want to dance around here.
Witness protection.
Goodness protection.
Good to see you still doing great work.
Thank you.
Good evening. Do you want to, we seem to work well, let's do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simms, and members of council. As Dr. Patton has introduced, I'll be providing you with an overview this evening of the living wage, to include what some other localities are doing, and we'll conclude on some information about the living wage actually in the city of Portsmouth. The initial living wage campaign to the United States began in Baltimore, Maryland in 1994, as an initiative to address poverty faced by workers and their families. These proponents came up with the concept of stating, you know, we need a living wage. A living wage is defined as the minimum income that is needed, that a worker needs to meet the basic needs. These basic needs include food, housing, utilities, transportation, healthcare, childcare, and in some cases, education. A living wage differs from minimum wage in such that the minimum wage is determined by federal law. It can fall below what is necessary to maintain a quality of life, and in some instances, can leave individuals and our workers to have to rely on governmental assistance. There are some cities that have enacted their living wage in the Commonwealth. However, there are still some questions about the authority of cities to actually impose a living wage based on the Dillon Rule. The Dillon Rule, as we know, basically says that localities can only do as much as the states actually give them the authority to do. It also should be noted that the living wage laws typically cover businesses that receive state assistance or have contracts with government. The Dillon Rule, as I said in summary, states that local governments in Virginia have only those powers that are specifically conferred onto them by the Virginia General Assembly. However, there are three localities that have enacted a living wage in the Commonwealth. And the next couple of slides would outline what they've enacted with respect to living wage in their jurisdictions. Arlington County has a living wage requirement that applies to service contracts with estimated annual value greater than $100,000, performed on county property, and awarded under a competitive procurement process. Effective with July 1st of this year, the county board increased the living wage from 1313 per hour to 1450 per hour. And as I said, all contracts that come up subsequently after that, that are awarded or renewed based on those parameters, are subject to this rate. Charlottesville requires that every contract wishing to engage in providing non-professional services, awarded after a competitive sealed bidding process, must pay each employee assigned to perform service under contract a living wage of at least $13 an hour. Charlottesville was also one of the localities that actually implemented, I think back in 2012. They also included that in their employees to have them fall under that rate. I think there were about 15, excuse me, 50 municipal employees that fell under $13 per hour, and they raised their salaries.
So the custodian contract goes out, the person that wins it, their employees need to make a minimum of $13?
Yes, sir.
In those cities?
Yeah.
In 2016, the Alexandria City Council adopted a living wage ordinance that requires all service contracts performed on city-owned or city-controlled property, with the exceptions of construction estimated to be greater than $50,000 in value, that they'll be formally solicited, and the services that are included continue to be custodial security, landscape maintenance, parking lot management, and things of that nature. In addition, all contracts awarded are required to provide quarterly and annual reports of wages to the city to ensure that they're abiding by that legislation. And their current living wage is $14.13 per hour. The Massachusetts Institute of Technology provides information on living wages for the cities in the United States. The living wage is calculated at the county, metropolitan area, state, regional, and national level. It is currently calculated for 381 metropolitan areas in all 50 states and the District of Columbia. Their living wage model is market, is a market-based approach that draws upon geographical specific expenditure data that is likely related, is actually related to the family's likely minimum food, childcare, health insurance, housing, transportation, other basic necessities. The living wage calculator uses these cost elements and the rough effects of income and payroll taxes to determine the minimum employment earning necessary to meet a family's basic needs while also maintaining some self-sufficiency. It also should be noted, and this is a key thing that sometimes that people don't understand, we recognize that there's other, I'd say, niceties that should be covered in a living wage, but it doesn't include things as far as entertainment, unpaid vacations, or holidays, nor, which is also important to note, it doesn't provide a means to plan for future savings. And again, it's just a minimum income standard. This slide here represents the hourly rate an individual should work, should earn to support their family, according to the MIT. These figures are based upon working full-time, which equates to 2,080 hours for single adult families. The adult assumed to be employed full-time. For comparative purposes, we went back and we looked at actual city data, and our average full-time salary for city employees, $43,858, which actually equates to $21.08 per hour. However, we are aware there's always going to be some salaries or hourly rates that are going to fall below the proposed living wage in Portsmouth.
Excuse me. What did that number you just gave? You said hourly, what you just read?
What? 2,080.
No. What did you read, $21 an hour, the average, what?
For the average city, full-time city employee.
The average?
Average.
How is that beneficial to a living wage?
Well...
The living wage, we're talking about the bottom, so why would you go and get the average? What is...
I did the average just for comparative purposes in that regard.
Comparing to what, though? I want to make sure that we don't smoke in mirrors.
Sure, no, no, no smoke in mirrors in that regards. For us to act...
Why is that important?
It's important just, sir, just so much for, as a benchmark, per se. For us to actually compute an actual average wage for our city employees, we would really have to delineate by the number of adults in their household, child, you know, the number of children, and all those other different factors.
Like MIT is doing.
Correct, like MIT is doing. You have to know how many adults are actually working in the house, I mean, how many are actually working, how many are not. And it was just for comparative purposes, no smoke in mirrors intended, sir.
So they've gone and do a survey per household to give you these numbers?
MIT? They actually use this information from each geographical area. They have some certain benchmarks. For example, for food, they use the USDA. There are some estimates they use as far as the minimum food plans that a family should have. They get that information from there. From health insurance, they're going to get those from the health insurance companies and kind of find out comparatively how much health insurance is going to cost. The key thing is they look at it from a geographical area, because we all know, if you're living up north, you know, you're going to make more because you actually pay more. But that's how they draw the data down. If you actually go to the website, you can go to any city in the United States, and they'll pop up this comparative data for you. There's some other indicators that speak to, you know, transportation and things of that nature, but it's information that they get from our local area.
So this is the formula-driven, for the city of Portsmouth, they're saying that an adult should be making 12, 27 per hour?
Yes, sir. And one adult with three children, that means that that one adult is actually working, that it would be 35, 46. If two adults, again, now with this one, I wanted to compare so we could actually see, with two adults and one working, it's $19.08 per hour. Two adults with, now the two adults with one child, yes, it's lower than the two adults with one working, because in this case, with the two adults with one child, that equates to $13.53. That assumes that actually both of them are actually working.
They're bringing home $27 now.
Yes, yes, they're bringing home that way. That's why from a lot of localities, it's, it's not difficult, it can be challenging if you really...
The balance here is, I'm not going to say, you know, I'm hiring you, Ms. Gooden, to do this job, and I'm not going to say, well, if you have, if you're a single female, I'm going to pay you this.
That's correct.
But if you have a husband and three children, I'm going to pay you differently.
Correct.
It's the value of the job, not the value of who you have at home.
That's correct. And that's what some of the proponents, what some of the proponents of the living wage actually say is, they say, first of all, it would be hard for a lot of employers to do this. As you know, as the city's human resources director, we're only supposed to ask questions that are job-related. Who's living in the house, and how many of your children have, or incidental?
You can't even ask.
No, you're not, you can't.
You can't.
And also, again, you're looking at the salary based upon the worth, and even with that, you know, you're looking at the experience that that person brings to the job.
Yeah, then you get into the, oh, I'm going to pay you different because you're a girl or a boy, or you're 60, or you're...
That's correct. But that's, that's just some of the common challenges with looking at it. I think our main purpose this evening was just to provide some of the information, help, you know, maybe garner some additional thoughts, and see if there's any, you know, thoughts or direction, you know, for, you know, Dr. Patton, for us to do what we need to do to actually look at it. We just know that wages, anywhere you go, it's an important topic. We all want to make sure that our employees are getting paid, you know, in a manner in which they can sustain themselves and their family. And again, the premise of the living wage is so that workers do not have to rely on governmental assistance.
Where are we headed with this?
Well, that's what you all will tell us where you want to go. We were asked to bring you back around.
Right. The first thing we want to make sure is, is where the numbers are and how we fit into that, without knowing all of the precise data that you have up there. We need to know how many of our employees that are working for this city and not making at least livable wages.
Okay.
If we've got 30% of our citizens or our employees in here that are working for us full-time and aren't able to meet that minimum criteria, we'd like to know that.
Okay.
Because that's important. That's why I questioned the average number.
Sure.
And what good was that $21 an hour? Because if I'm a laborer and I'm making $8 or $9 an hour, and I've got three or four kids, and whatever my situation is, you telling us $21 an hour, that'd help that person one bit.
That's correct.
And I think that was the rationale behind the reason we asked you to come with it. So I think our next step, we want to know where do our employees fit with that benchmark there. And we don't need to know all of that data, but I mean...
Just kind of an average.
As an average of our starting folks and folks that we're going out and getting, because that's, that's key for a lot of our folks that are on the lower end of the scale, but it's also...
Below $15 people.
Yeah, those types of things. And then the other piece is, some of our critical places that we're having a hard time recruiting and getting people, like social service caseworkers and folks of that nature, you know, how does that all marry up?
Right, okay.
Because it all ties in.
That's correct.
We want to know where our folks are, because it's just, you'd hate to see your trash guy come by every day, and you're waving at him, and the guy's not making enough to get it, and you're smiling, and he's up there sweating and mad as hell. I mean, you know, that just, I can't live with things like that. I don't think anybody else up here would either. So that was the rationale, I think. I think it was introduced by Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, and we've discussed it several times.
But we all concurred, because we wanted to know where we were sitting with this benchmark here. So if we could do that next, you'd get some idea of...
Okay, we could do that in some, some ranges and some parameters, and what we could probably do, sir, is within some ranges, while we won't necessarily drill down to the individual, we could almost do, like, some averaging. We could take, like, a range and show maybe employees making between, let's say, we said between $10 and $15 an hour. We could do some composites, and we could kind of show you all, it can't necessarily get into, you know, how many adults are going to be in their house, but we could speak to that. As far as the information, we have health insurance and other things of that nature and costs, that we can get somewhere close, so that we can do what you, what you need us to do.
Did the state give these three cities permission to do that? And if so, how do they do it? Do they summon their charters, or what?
I believe to some degree, some of it was actually in some of their charters, and some of it was just a council vote. I will say this, I can't quote this exactly, but there was some information that I believe one of the representatives was going to bring in front of the General Assembly, that was actually going to change, was actually going to impact some of the cities who had actually come out with an additional wage. As far as how they actually went about doing that, I couldn't speak to you into that regards. I think that'd be a question from...
The, the three cities that have living wages built into their contracts have done so by ordinance, but, but there's still a bit of a question as to how far they've reached out, but no one has challenged it thus far in terms of setting those, in terms of, of the ordinance. As you all will recall, when I did the legislative update, I also mentioned the fact that there was a state law that attempted to preclude cities outright from establishing certain wage limits, and the governor vetoed that particular legislation, and that veto held. And the governor, in his veto statements, also said that he felt that it was within the locality's ability to do the wage limit, much like Davis-Bacon, which is already in federal law, as well as there being some opportunity perhaps in an incentive grant process to, to incentivize someone perhaps to do a little higher wage. But those were the two elements, but the three cities have done so by ordinance, but it's, and it has not been challenged, as of yet.
I would like, on the three cities that have implemented the living wage, I would like to see, find out what the impact's been on their budgets since it's been implemented.
Yes, sir.
We can do, we can reach out to them. We can do that here.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, the next request that we had was for a project update, which I shared with you.
Okay.
And Mr. Wright is here and ready to give it on those that are active right now.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'm going to give you an update on several projects that you requested information on. The first one I'll start with is the seawall replacement project. Cross and Construction Services is working with their material suppliers to determine the delivery date for both the H piles and the sheet piles delivered to the city of Portsmouth. The key in this is the vendor that's supplying the sheet piles actually located in Germany. So those, that material has to be shipped to the city, and that, that impacts the project schedule, and I'll get additional information on that by the end of this week.
What section is this we're referring to?
The sections being replaced, or the material.
The material.
The material's the sheet piles.
For what section?
For the section...
You've got it broken up into four sections, correct?
We've got it broken up into four sections.
And we've completed two?
We've not completed any. We've, well, if you talk about the total seawall we've completed, one, that's down Crawford, down nearby Old Town. The section in distress now between Holiday Inn and the Marina here, we haven't done, we haven't completed. We've started work on the one section right there between the Renaissance and Admiral's Landing. That's the section that will be completed in its entirety. And 70% of the section from High Street Landing down towards City Hall will be completed with this project, just over...
And that's $5 million?
Total 10.6 million.
So we're still waiting on material?
I thought we broke the section up into $5 million.
For, for one section and 70% of another section.
Okay.
So it's one entire section and 70% of another section.
Okay, all right, very good.
So we're waiting on material?
Yes, sir.
For another six months?
No, I'll get some additional information by the end of the week, and it'll be in the next update.
But I'll hold up in concern. Can't get it here. I've got to go out of Germany, it's coming on ship.
It's coordination. You don't want to start work and then have to stop because you have all the material. Okay, on the boat ramp, we received bids to replace existing concrete maps at the boat ramp with steel-reinforced concrete aprons this past Monday. The contractor that was the low bidder was Early Marine, who's actually working on the fishing pier, and we're working with a contractor to get a schedule from them by the end of the week. Okay, the fishing pier, the contractors mobilized another crew out there. Weather permitting, that work will be completed within the next two weeks.
So the barges and all are there?
Yeah, he's been there. They've, they've got all the decking and stringers done, they got a T-section done. They should start decking next week.
And we're going out another 300 foot?
220. 220.
220 from what we have? We got, what, about 150?
Actually, we started, actually, we started from the shore. We actually just started from the shore, so it's 220 out from the shore, the two...
We utilize them much there or not? Just turn it down?
No, we're just leaving it as is. The actual, those two small piers are being used every day. We've actually seen people actually catching fish off of those two 50-foot piers. Crook is about this big. Poki Smokey, H&amp;B Railroad is a successful low bidder on the project to repair the track for the train ride, and just like the boat ramp, we'll get a estimated start date by the end of the week, when he's going to be able to get out there and make some repairs.
H&amp;B?
H&amp;B Railroad, Virginia Avenue.
Local.
Okay, Church and Bridge Replacement, this project is just past the 60% design stage. VDOT will receive two projects from middles from the city for review this month. They'll receive our value engineering study with recommendations, along with our right-of-way package. Concurrently, we've completed the environmental assessment, and we'll be coordinated with permitting, what's the appropriate permitting agencies, just as a, as a review. This project replaces the North Brown Bridge span, incorporates a protected multi-use path, provides upgrades to the Southbound Bridge span, and other related improvements. The total bridge cost is estimated at $35.5 million, just for a funding breakdown. 35.5.
5.5.
Just the break.
Yeah, when I started running the first time, I think it was 12, then I went to 20, and then I went to 24. I don't get this. Okay, got it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I just have one more thing. I'd like to call to the mayor and members of council. Today in the Virginia Impala, they are recognizing a stalwart in promotions and management and development. Some of you may remember Bill Luther. Bill Luther, while it was not captured in the article, served as entertainment manager for Portsmouth Harbor Center. In fact, he was the first under former city manager Jim Oliver, and he served the city from 2005 to 2007. Mr. Luther helped to bring many great performers to the pavilion during that time. That concludes my presentation.
How old was he?
89.
89.
Yes.
All right, any liaison reports? Any, thanks for the good, oh, yes, ma'am?